Thank you all for joining us for the first of two, possibly three, we'll find out tomorrow, public budget hearings. My name is Manny Amarka. I am currently the Budget Chair for the Jackson County Legislature. And I am surrounded by my colleagues, Vice Chairwoman Megan Marshall, legislator Charlie Franklin, and legislator Donna Payton. And we may have some others joining us. I know Legislative Smith's aide is here. Am I missing anyone else from the legislators? Oh, yeah. Legislative Lauer's aide is also here, Karen. And so, we would like to go ahead and get started to be timely. Yes. So, we have our county administrator Troy Schulte, our Chief General Counsel Ryan Kazinsky. We have the Prosecutor's Office represented. So, we have a large staff of Jackson County represented. Obviously, we have our amazing Chair's office here as well. So, thank you all for taking the time to be here. It was my goal, as I became to Chair of Budget two weeks ago, I think, two and a half weeks ago now, to create some transparency and invite folks into the process and hear ideas and suggestions that weren't already proposed in the budget. To give you some landscape, I have one budget book, and my apologies for not sharing. I believe it is online now, Troy, so you can find the full budget for Jackson County online. We just got our books updated this past Friday. So, it is a working process. We have until the end of this month to budget by state statute. So, we have started three weeks ago now, and that is why you had a rushed invitation. So, as Budget Chair, I promised, and I promised the administration, that we'll start budgeting as soon as we finish with this budgeting process, so that we don't have the rush effort in the future. As you all very well know, we have a quite robust budget with several lines across the fund itself. I would encourage you to go to the website and find the online budget version, so you can see all the breakouts of expenditures and revenues as proposed. I don't want to talk too much. We have another legislator who's joined us here. But I wanted to acknowledge the fact that this is for hearing and for listening to you all, your ideas, your proposals. I know we have probably folks from different municipalities here that have suggestions, organizations, individuals. And so, I want to reserve the balance of this time to hear directly from you all. So, without further comment, oh, thank you, and our communications staff, which I was remiss in acknowledging here as well. So, as a reminder, we have asked everyone, because we anticipated a lot of participation, to keep your testimonies to five minutes. I will be your time keeper and ask that we hold that, so we can be respectful of everyone's time and commitment. You can have supplemental submissions if you'd like. My aide Rebecca is here. Unfortunately, we don't have business cards yet, because we don't have a budget yet. So, we're operating within our own process as well. But you can find that information, I'm assuming, in the back of the room, submit additional testimony if you have additional information you'd like to share. So, without further ado, keeping my own time of five minutes, I think we'll go ahead and get started. I know we have folks.
We have the National Anthem.
I don't know that we have a flag unfortunately here to do that. Would you like to sing our National Anthem?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, we've already done that today, but we're happy to do it again if you'd like. Unfortunately, I don't think we have a flag to pledge or... Is that the list? Okay. All right. Sir, if you will, stand up.
That works, yeah.
If you'd like to lead us.
Oh, definitely, okay. Good to go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This is the creativity we're looking for right here. All right.
Name it numbers.
All right. So, I believe, I have a list here on my computer that I was supposed to pull up prior to. I need a hotspot to do that. So, let's start with our first folks who have signed up here this evening while I pull up that list, for those who have pre-registered. We have Helen Rosgay. Is that, I may have mispronounced that correctly.
It's Rosgay, but that's Rosgay.
Okay. Rebecca will have a microphone for you. And again, we won't necessarily respond with questions. I know that there's some staff here that may be able to answer your questions out in the hallway, to respect our time. But just want to make sure we listen, we hear. Please state your organization, your name. If you have a proposed idea, concept, if you have proposed dollar amounts, those are helpful. Funds that you'd like these things to be earmarked from. I'm sure our county administrators, we consider these things, would appreciate any direction you have, because unfortunately, we don't have a money tree, I believe.
Not yet.
Not yet. Vice Chair is interested in creating one. We have our chairman here, Mr. Geron McGee, as well. And so, yeah, without further ado, Helen, if you join us, Rebecca's got our mic here.
Okay.
Oh, you got it. And please stand and state your name and go over.
Okay. My name is Helen Rosgay. And I was here, I'm really impressed that we're going to have some funds initiated for the transportation of people that are wanting to go and get an abortion in another state.
I'm sorry, will you talk to the mic so we can...
I guess I'm supposed to talk to the mic. So, I'm sorry. Okay. So, I want to tell you, thank you for allowing me to speak. The Lord has wired me to address the situation with so many people wanting to do anything and everything they can to support the murder of babies. So, this to even be an issue shows that people supporting abortion issues were neither brought up knowing our Lord and realizing He gave us the Ten Commandments, of which the fifth one is, Thou shall not kill. One of the most gruesome ways is how they do it, by tearing apart the baby in the womb, where they should be the safest and most protected. This is very offensive to our Lord and all of us that know how painful and barbaric that is. All for the money and with your God, and that's your other God, is your money. Another sin is against the First Commandment, and that's your other God. Just think of all of their four abortions, their mom gave them life. I thank God, my mom was pro-life. Either way, your eternity is going to be the most miserable, as the Blessed Mother at Fathom in 1917 showed three children what hell was like. And this is important for us to know how bad it is. Back in 1917, the Blessed Mother appeared to three children, six different times, and on the 13th of July, she appeared and at these words, she opened her hands and showed these three children once again. The light streaming from them seemed to penetrate the earth, and the children beheld the vision of hell. Lucia cried out in terror, calling upon Our Lady. We could see a vast sea of fire. She revealed for many years later that plunged in the flames were demons and lost souls, and if they were red-hot coals, transparent black or bronze colored in human form, which floated about in the conflagration borne by the flames, which issued to them in the clouds falling on all sides as sparks fall in a great conflagration, weight of equilibrium amid shrieks and groans of sorrow and despair that horrified us and caused us to tremble with fear. The devils could be distinguished by horrible and loathsome forms of animals, frightful and unknown, by transparent light black coals, and they turned red-hot. That's just the simple version of what hell would be like for people that are all for abortion and for enabling people to have abortions. Nobody that supports or enables or agrees to abortion will get to heaven, and there are no do-overs once during hell. Our Lord has a designated purpose for every conceived child that was ever born, that was ever conceived. And I should say that 63 million of them were never able to be born. So, they've been wasted and murdered. The thing is, we have a free will to do what we want. So, it's up to you to keep on doing what you are doing and lose your soul for all eternity in hell, or change your mind, get right with the Lord, and get to heaven to be totally happy forever. If you were truly concerned about women's health, you would teach them about abstinence, which keeps them from getting pregnant, that no one would need an abortion, the loss of self-respect, and not having the guilty conscience of murdering their own child, the true facts of what abortion...
Thank you, Helen, so much for your testimony. You can submit the rest of the remainder of your text to Rebecca, and we'll share it with the rest of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Ms. Tracy Rice. I guess that was insufficient. Tracy Rice. Tracy Rice going once. All right. Sherry Patrick.
Yes.
All right, your five minutes is starting now.
Okay, I too want to speak up for Mr. White's proposal for the County Reproductive Fund. There are many residents of Jackson County who feel strongly that a woman should have the right to make decisions concerning her own body, including whether to terminate the existence of an unborn fetus or baby that is within the confines of her body. Those who feel this way view the unborn fetus or baby as simply a massive tissue with cells that are dividing and multiplying. They feel that since the woman had a part in the creation of this mass, and since it resides in her body, that she alone has the right to say whether it stays there or not. They do not view it as a living organism. They view it no differently than an unwanted mole or an irritating skin tag, something that should be able to be removed efficiently and without regret, and certainly without accountability for the choice. It is my body, my choice, they say. On the other hand, there are many residents of Jackson County, like Helen, whose religious beliefs include the Ten Commandments as contained in the Bible. They believe that God Himself gave those commandments, and that the commandment Thou shalt not kill includes prohibiting the killing or termination of the existence of conceived human beings who have not yet born. So, how does a governing body like you all keep things in proper balance? Because the government is for the people, but it's also of the people and by the people. And so, when you have two opposing views that are still fiercely opposed, where each side views their own paradigm only and cannot compromise, I've been thinking a lot about this, and this is what I would like to propose. I think that the equitable thing is to let those who feel that they need or want to terminate their pregnancy to make that choice. But because the state of Missouri does not support legalized abortion, and this is a state decision, as upheld by the Supreme Court of the United States, it is a state issue, not a county issue, then let those women who want to do this go to another state where it is legal to carry out their choice. And I also feel that you should decide that they should bear all the costs of that decision. And if they can't afford it, then there are other options available, such as the financial support of friends, family, or even online crowdfunding. By doing that, making that choice to not have a county fund, those who do not want to be associated with abortion in any way, shape, or form because it violates God's law, they would not be forced to see their tax money go for any part of pro-abortion choices of their neighbors. I feel that this is the only equitable and fair solution. To do anything else will trample on the freedoms of one party or another, and will cause greater conflict, including lawsuits, in our community. Respectfully, I ask you to reject Mr. White's proposal for the County Reproductive Fund. I'd like to add that I think that those who do believe in abortion may choose to set up or personally provide financial support to organizations which assist women with funding it out of state. Let those organizations pay for the transportation, lodging, childcare, and other non-abortion, yet peripheral abortion expenses that Mr. White's plan outlined. And let those of us who want no part of abortion have our freedom and liberty honored as well. Let us personally contribute to organizations who support reproductive services we do support, such as birthing classes, doulas, and lactation support. Just remember, government is of the people, by the people, and for the people, and that means all the people, not just part of them.
Thank you. Deborah Korn.
Okay. I almost think I should have done my homework, because this doesn't seem like I know what I'm doing.
By all means.
Okay, so, I'll call him a friend. Chris Sander told me about this meeting tonight, and he probably told me, because I'm the current standing president at the Tarsany Lake Citizens Association. And I've sent him pictures and different things, and as a matter of fact, Jeanie Lauer sent her rep last year, or I think it was last year or the year before, with Rebecca, so we could kind of discuss that Tarsany Lakes is a, two lakes, Wood Lake and Tarsany Lakes. It's an unincorporated Jackson County, about four and a half miles south of Grange Valley. We are a Motto-Wana Fire District, we are a Grange Valley Envy Summit School District, we are Oak Grove Melon Addresses, we are Kansas City Phone Numbers. So, we are kind of like the Heinz 57 out there. And years ago, when I was just a little girl, my parents bought in at Tarsany Lakes, when it was a private lake. I was in the third grade, I'm 63 now, so that was a long time ago. We didn't live at Tarsany Lakes full-time till my senior year of high school. But I remember growing up, and when we'd come out, my dad would work on the property in the summertime, and we would go down to the lake, and we would swim all day, and we had a swing set down there, and we had picnic tables, and we had a lot of fun. Now, granted, it was a private lake back then, and what happened is, as time passed on, in approximately 1982, my mom took up a petition to disincorporate Tarsany Lakes, because before you had gravelled roads and tarred and gravelled roads, and you had a farmer that took his tractor and his plow and plowed the roads. You didn't have any kind of tiling roads, you didn't have any kind of help with your snow plowing, or your dam maintenance, or anything else. And it got to be where we just, they were a small community, and they didn't have the funds to do everything themselves. So, my mom took back the second time, in probably 1983, a petition, and went around and got neighbors to sign it, to see if we could disincorporate Tarsany Lakes and have the county take over the ownership, so that we could get the funds necessary to do the dam, keep up the mowing of the grass, the ditches, and all those things. And that's what we did. So, Jackson County does own Tarsany Lakes, and therefore, we feel like currently, Chris Sander told me, that there's $0.00 allocated for Tarsany Lakes. Well, if you don't have any money, then the county can't do anything. And they've been really wonderful about getting an annual cleanup out of Tarsany Lakes. But what we really need, I sent some pictures, which probably didn't make much sense to your assistant, I'm not very technologically smart, so she probably thought, what is this picture's of? Well, what it's picture's of is what a lake looks like when the lily pads take over, and the water drains down, and there's no water, and you're walking your dog, and you can't tell much difference between the park ground and the lake, because it's overrun with lily pads. Now, at one time, conservation did stop the lake, and usually, every year, we have people come out, that it's a public lake now, so people come out and they fish there. But with the water going down like it is and everything, we tried back in 2001, when we started this idea, to basically get the county to come in and dredge the lake, where the low men on the totem pole, as far as taxes go. So, therefore, every year, it was like, well, we've got to take it out to Jacoma, we've got to take it out to Curly, we've got to take it here, there, and every word's broke down. We don't have the funds. We need to do something. This young couple here recently bought in, and I told them, I said, you know, I'm 63 now, but there are young people with kids that go to the Envy Summit School District. I don't see them out playing and having the fun I did when I was a kid, because there's nothing to do. The docks, when we had them come in and say, the dock's in disrepair, we need to take it out, we'll replace it, we'll put in a wheelchair accessible dock, you know, for people to fish. It's never happened. So, we've got a bunch of concrete pillars standing up out in what sometimes has water and sometimes doesn't. So, the bottom line is, we would like some money allocated, so that the county can come out and do some of the other things, such as maintain the mowing, the ditches, possibly lily pad removal, or dredging would be a wonderful thing, but that's a lot of money, and we all know that.
You did great. So, thank you so much for coming. Your time has expired. So, I think we've taken those notes, obviously. Looking for John Fierro next.
Good evening, Mr. Finance Chair and members of the Jackson County Legislature. My name is... My name is John Fierro, and I'm the President and CEO of Matty Road Center. We have been a longstanding Jackson County, Missouri nonprofit organization, now in our 129th year of community service. We service the historic northeast area, as well as the Westside neighborhoods of Jackson County, Missouri. I'm here, one, to ask for your continued support with regards to the Jackson County Mental Health Levy, Combat, ETS, and the Jackson County Children's Services Fund. Those are very important funds that are longstanding, and each year, I think, you have to set limits on the amount of, I guess, tax rates that are collected. And I would just say that each of those funds are helping to provide mental health services, keep kids safe and out of trouble after school, and working with young adults with developmental disabilities, as well as an assortment of other social service programs. And so, it's those programs that really help to keep our kids moving in a positive direction to achieve academic, high academic achievement, and then also to, it impacts on the areas of violence in our community. I would just conclude with my last couple of minutes, hopefully I'm on schedule, that I know Jackson County, like other municipalities around the country, received dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And I suspect a lion's share of those funds have been used to replace lost revenue to maintain Jackson County services, which of course are very important, and certainly I support. I'm not sure if there are remaining unencumbered dollars. There are several community needs that exist in our service areas, in particular economic development, helping to retrain individuals and to place them back into the workforce for higher-paying jobs. We have individuals who are uninsured and require continued COVID vaccination opportunities. That's children and adults. Going back to the violence in our communities, we have individuals that, let's say, aren't employed, having some challenges in their lives, and moving towards violence and crime in our community. And there are a number of initiatives that we have in place where there is a need for gap funding, not necessarily money to develop a program, but just to meet a gap. And then, in the areas of economic development, certainly helping with housing assistance to ensure that people do not move into being homeless. And then, lastly, the continuation of behavioral health. The demand for therapy is just out of the roof. You know, all of us being shut in, and then you take that to the kids, there's definitely a need. So, in conclusion, I would just ask you to consider modeling after Kansas City, Missouri, and the establishment of the Rebuild Kansas City program. If there are ARPA dollars remaining, that you establish a specific fund with a formal request for proposals, that organizations like Matty Road Center, and I'd imagine many of the groups here today, could submit a request aligning with those ARPA areas that are eligible. And most of those areas that I described, according to the Missouri Department of Economic Development, are eligible uses of those funds. So, thank you.
I just have 38 seconds.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Well, I would just say thank you, and you know, my son lives out here in Lee's Summit, and this is a true story. I'm coming down here, and I see his Jeep, and I think, well, maybe that's him, and sure enough, we're at a stoplight, and pulls up to me and honks. So, this was a good trip to come out here, so thank you.
All right. You got this.
This is also public speaking training. Get in now. I'm very nervous, because I'm very young, and I've heard of something like this. Okay, well, I'll start off with, my name's Courtney. I live at Tarsany Lake, just bought a house out there, my first, me and my fiance's first home, together. We have three children, and we moved to Tarsany Lake to look for a new beginning for our children, out of this, you know, not out of the city, but far enough out of the suburbs and whatnot. And I wrote this, so I guess I'll read it. For over 20 years, these lovely people have tried to put this lake back together. But our community has been told, it's Tarsany Lake, what do you expect? We, as a community, should not be treated with such a hassle or inconvenience to the county. We pay our taxes like any other lake in the area, and should be treated as such. People are living in sheds, under trees, in campers. People are living in houses that are hazardous and should be condemned. Homes are sitting half-burnt, people have junked in their front yards, and the county never cuts the grass, or restocks the lake, or cuts the lily pads out. But maybe, maybe once a year, they come out and cut the grass. Our community deserves better, and honestly, our community feels like the county does not care about us. The Sheriff's Department puts us off like we're nothing. We have dealt with drugs, and drugs being dealt in front of my children's bus stop, with kids on the bus. The Sheriff's Department does nothing about this. People are fighting out in their front yards, throwing things at each other. The Sheriff's Department does nothing about this. And when my nice neighbor told you that my kids don't go outside and play, she was not lying. They are not allowed to go outside and play because of what is out there. Because in my community, we do not, we do not feel safe and taken care of by our county and our Sheriff's Department. We have homes burning down, we have condemned homes with people still living in them, we have people living in sheds, people living in campers, and nothing is being done about this. I have taken pictures, we've taken pictures of the dam that was just replaced, cracked, and leaking water. It is dangerous. The dock that we have on the lake right now is a wooden dock, it's falling apart, it is hazardous. My children are not allowed to go on the lake because of this. I am asking, please, for the county to take our community into consideration and put us in your budget, and help us bring this lake back to what it needs to be. Thank you.
You have two more minutes, so...
That's okay. I'm too nervous. Somebody else.
You did great. Looking for Josh Kimbrough. Josh, you have five minutes.
I don't know about you, but five minutes. My name is Josh Kimbrough. I'm a small business owner. I'm also lead researcher at my firm. We specialize in creating generational wealth through community and entrepreneurship. So, I'm asking the legislation to support the Small Business COVID proposal, as small businesses actually affect our community in several different ways. I don't think people realize, I'm just going to pull some stats from the Small Business Council. So, firms with fewer than 500 employees account for 99.7% of jobs. Firms with fewer than 100 employees account for 98.1% of jobs. Firms with fewer than 20 employees make up 89% of jobs. Firms with fewer than 10 employees account for 78.5% of jobs. So, small businesses affect mental health, they affect our urban population, which a lot of dollars recently, you know, has been a lot of query, because that hasn't trickled down to the community. So, that's one of the things that we wanted to address in this legislation, and continue to address that as we need to, as what my research dictates is a co-red on our community. So, with that being said, the Small Business proposal that we addressed, of course, as you're going to give more light on that, but specifically, it hasn't been addressed, and the problems that have been faced in the community are still rising. So, that's all I really had to say. I'll come back with more stats, but I told you I was going to keep it short and sweet.
Thank you, sir. I'm just comparing three different lists here, so bear with me. All right, looks like Cheryl Taylor. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm also here to talk about the proposed abortion funding. Forcing taxpayers to help fund abortion violates the Supreme Court's decision that each state should be able to choose for itself on their issue of abortion. Missouri has made that choice, and now this proposal seeks to undo that choice. Missouri has made that choice, and now this proposal seeks to undo that choice in an unconstitutional way. There's no reason for Jackson County to get enroiled in litigation where the Supreme Court has now given that authority to the states. The decision, including the funding decision, is to be made state by state, not county by county. The true cost to taxpayers of this unconstitutional decision must include the enormous attorney's fees that will be incurred to litigate this issue for years to come. Jackson County is in Missouri and should accept the state's decision. If they want to change it, they should make that pitch to the state, not the county. This is a bad proposal which will mire Jackson County in untold litigation, and it seeks in vain to defend such an unconstitutional encroachment on the rights of the citizens of Missouri.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Storm Dylan. I'm going to mess this up. So please, please.
Dylan Schneider.
Thank you, Dylan Schneider.
My name is Storm Dylan Schneider, and I'm here to oppose the abortion, the ARPA money for abortion. I think what this young lady said, where pro-abortion organizations should be involved in this, they should be funding it, raising money for that. I mean, it's possible if that's what they want to do. I'm totally against it. I'm totally against the fact that Mr. White said, as elected leaders, it is our responsibility to take action when our community is in danger. And it is clear that the Supreme Court's overturning of Roe versus Wade has created a major health crisis in Jackson County. Let me tell you what a major health crisis is in Jackson County. Fentanyl. Nobody is talking about fentanyl. My son died in 2021 from a fentanyl overdose. He was 33 years old. I'm not here to plead his case. He was 33. Here's what the Jackson County Health Department website states. One in five is going to break your hearts. That fentanyl opioid overdose is the number one killer in Jackson County. 70% of that is fentanyl. One in five of these deaths are under 15. That should break all of our hearts. That shouldn't, that shouldn't matter who you are. If we don't get a grip on this, I don't, we're all going to know, not just me, you're all going to know heartbreak. And what's heartbreaking is that one in five are under 15. We need to do something about that. I attended a Blue Springs police, the police department, they were on a form. It was sad. All I heard was people talking about rehabs, rehab. I have a son that's addicted. It doesn't matter. They have to, you could want it for them. We have to get in front of it. I'm not sure how to do this, but we need to have some kind of an education, a committee, something that can get to our kids before they get to that point. And with COVID and the shutdown and isolation and all those types of things, it's worse. I mean, it's really, and I don't need five minutes, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, talking about danger, this abortion thing, I mean, it's over, it's done with as far as I'm concerned, you know, it's illegal in Missouri. Let's focus on saving our children that are here. One in five, under 15. That breaks my heart. They don't know any better. Anyway, that's what I have to say, so.
Thank you. Maxfield Cunger or Kanger.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm not saying my aide's handwriting is kind of hard to read.
No, my handwriting is awful. You made it further than I would have expected, but yeah. Thank you again for giving me a moment to speak. My name is Maxfield Cunger. I'm here representing Canes Markets, a nonprofit. I started to help build a more equitable food system. So our, our mission is to really work with small business owners on the east side of Kansas City. We work right now primarily east of Truce, but west of 435, and help small mom and pop corner convenience stores sell healthy food. So we provide all of the equipment necessary for that small business and the food itself on consignment five days a week. So we're trying to make sure that the quality is really high while the prices stay really affordable. Our model actually is still unique to anywhere in the country, and it's grown fairly quickly. So we got started just a few years ago in 2018. We've now grown to over 40 locations that are currently selling healthy foods all around Kansas City, and we have an ever-growing waitlist. What I'm hoping and asking for your all's support tonight is for consideration for our organization in this year's budget. We do, we've got big plans for the future, and we've gotten attention from not just around the city. We'd love to expand out of Lee's Summit. We'd love to expand into Wichita and eventually across the nation and have Kansas City really as a model for how we make real, fresh, healthy food affordable and available for everybody.
Your shirt says potato. Do you have potatoes?
We do have potatoes. And we sell these shirts on our website. They are available.
Sales pitch is.
Thank you.
I'm all about healthy food. Mr. Maxfield, would you re, re, tell us your organization?
Yeah, Canes Markets. K-A-N-B-E-S Markets, M-A-R-K-B-E-S. Thank you, thank you.
My name is Dr. Gordon Bell. I've been a citizen of Lee's Summit since 1993, raised six kids here, my wife and I. This is all very new to me. I don't know if you open these up for this kind of thing routinely. I found out about it just a couple of days ago, and when I saw that on the list was the potential to appropriate a million dollars, I believe, or so, from Mr. White for women to be able to get abortions across state lines. Then I felt very compelled to come and jump in here to make my voice known. I find, I believe abortion to be murder. I think it's a horror to me. And that's the purpose I'm here, is not to ask you, or to advise you how to spend money, which occurs to me, I've heard any number of reasons here, it'd be much better to spend those monies on. My purpose is here to ask you not what to spend money on. It occurs to me also, too, I'm a pathologist, and if I, if I had my wish, it'd be to change hearts for everybody in here to think about abortion the way that I do. But it occurs to me that I can maybe bring a little bit of a different perspective to y'all that I don't, I don't suspect anybody here has had. As a pathologist, I've been medical director of labs here in the Kansas City area for 30 years now. I look under a microscope and make diagnoses of whatever piece of tissue is taken off the human body, you name it. And that means I've seen babies, I've seen eggs, I've seen sperm individually, and then I've seen babies from about two to three hours old and anything since then, under a microscope. And if you can see what I can see through a microscope and see the complexity and design, I think it would, it would very likely change some hearts. You'd have to ask the question about how that happens, and when did that baby become a baby? Anyway, that's my point, is to plead for you not to spend those monies on something that I believe to be murder. Spend it on the money that would be much better spent. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Ezzy Redwood. Quick show of hands really quickly, how many of you know a small business owner? Okay. And of those, how many of those small businesses that you know did not struggle during COVID? Okay. So one thing I think is really important is that we have this idea of small businesses, but we sometimes don't realize exactly how many people they employ, or how much they affect our lives. Every time, from being the number one employer of returning citizens, right, to actually picking up like kids of their employees, giving people rides. How many of us know a small business owner who has given their staff or their staff's kids rides to and from daycare or work? Right? Okay. So we have about 25% of those, right? So the small businesses are an important part of the community, which is why it's so disheartening to see that we've allocated zero dollars when Platte County allocated $10 million. We have Clay County allocated $5 million. We have $14 million from Johnson County, and most comparable cities, comparable counties have allocated $20 million or more, right? So the small businesses touch everything from marketing and PR to the restaurants that are struggling to make ends meet. And I'll just tell my personal story. So we have several restaurants in town. At one point, we had almost 100 employees, right? They, they made well above minimum wage. They actually made between $15 and $20 an hour at a time where everyone else was paying $10 an hour, or if they worked fast food, $8 an hour, right? So when COVID hit, we, we, we sat them down and we looked them in the eye, and we didn't know if PPP was coming or not coming. We did, we heard that it was almost three months' wait for unemployment. We're like, they're going to get evicted before then. And so we looked them in the eye and we said, we're going to make sure you all get paid until we figure something else out, or until we come out with this. Well, it doesn't take much math to figure out, but at 100, almost 100 employees making well above minimum wage, that killed our, our savings, but that's, and we didn't care because that's an example of how your staff, a lot of times as a small business, becomes your family. We get, we get the calls when they need to get bailed out before their parents. And a lot of times what we found is if we don't bail them out, they sit there, you know, because their families don't have the money. Like if, if we don't take them to, if we don't loan them cars, if we don't take them in, if we don't give them the money to borrow a car, to get a car, like their kids like end up causing them to lose their jobs. But while a lot of other employers would just fire them, we work with them, right? We'll go pick up the kids, we'll loan them the money for the cars, because we as small businesses in these neighborhoods care, but we can't do it alone. And we're tired of doing it alone. We need you all's support because all of the things that can kill us are killing us. And most of the small businesses in our community are hanging on by a thread. Every 1% of small businesses that we lose is 1,000 jobs, which means 1,000 people who are now not being able to pay their rent, their car payments, you know, some of those people are going to get creative with how they come up with money, and, and that's, has ripple effects that we sometimes don't realize. And so I say all that to say that we have a small business proposal. We would love for you all to take a look at it, and even more so, and you'll hear a lot more from us next week, but we really would love for you all to champion us and support us, just like we support the county. Thank you.
A reminder for folks who may have come in a little late, in the back of the room, you can sign up to speak. I am getting those transferred to me via text. So please, if you have and would like to speak, sign up in the back and that will get to us. Moving along, we have, looks like Nigel Johnson.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nigel Johnson. I'm the first certified affordable housing provider in the state reserve, and also I'm the president of the Hood Hope Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, in which what we do is we teach financial literacy to youth. We house ex-offenders when they get out of prison, we organize neighborhood cleanups and a variety of other things throughout the community to help out. Over the pandemic, we had a lot of trouble because we didn't have a lot of support and things. We had to pay for a lot of things out of pocket. And as a nonprofit, we get to talk to a lot of business owners, particularly since we're in the housing industry, we talk to a lot of electricians and plumbers and small businesses and carpenters and everybody you can think of, and these people are struggling. It's been so many times, like Ezzy said, that where I've had to bail people out, or help them with their rent, or assist with utilities, or, or food, I've passed, just this week, we've been passing out backpacks full of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to people. People out here can't get jobs, and the business owners that could hire them aren't having the proper assistance to be able to stay in business, to help those other people that are in need. So it ends up snowballing. So I'm here, I'm hoping that you guys support the Small Business Support Proposal. We need to, we need to find some more ways that we can help these other businesses out here. I mean, we, we have to help each other. I mean, that's, that's just the only way this is going to work. Thank you.
Mr. Cecil Watry.
Hello, all. Hello, board. My name is Cecil Watry. I'm the executive director of the Kansas City Black Mental Health Initiative, which is a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). I'm also a small business owner. I have a private practice right up Rice Road, right up on Powerland Services. I came here today to kind of speak to much of the same effect as, as a small business owner, as well as a person running a nonprofit. But I just wanted to kind of speak to the fact that in 2022, Jackson County ended the year with approximately about 189 homicides over, and over 700 non-fatal shootings. That's in Kansas City, Independence. I think we had eight here in Lee's Summit, Grandview, and Raytown. The community is left to process this reform with limited resources. I, I know that Matty Rhodes is here, and they said that, you know, that they're helping in the Northeast, but as far as accumulatively citywide or within Jackson County, the majority of service providers of Jackson County are aware that there's a shortage of mental health professionals that reflect the diversity of the community. The Kansas City Black Mental Health Initiative has a, has a mission to acknowledge and diligent in work and support to strengthen the community by creating awareness, representation, and destigmatization of mental health within Jackson County, within our most diverse populations. We wish to provide scholarships and opportunities for mental health professionals who may receive their degree in, in providing mental health services but have barriers for training. Workshops, experience supervision, incentivize and equip them to aid in the mental health, in the mental wellbeing of our community. It's imperative that Jackson County has the resources to assist mental health professionals in the community with the best practices to help those who have been victimized by violence, or in many cases have become perpetual, have become perpetrators, I hate this word, of violence, from the, from the trauma that they've experienced. We believe that by diversifying the field, which destigmatizes mental health and assists those who are experiencing poverty, food insecurities, under and unemployment, emotional distress, which leads to violence. We want our community to transition from dividing to living, and beginning the healing process that subsequently prevents future violence. We're hoping that you provide the community with the resources it needs to drive past this epidemic of violence rather than surviving it. I, I say that to say, as a small business owner, it is imperative that COVID has also affected how we provide service, even so much in the sense of the meetings that I've taken, that I've gone to downtown are all about the fact that there is a multitude of money and not enough providers. Whether it's them in their own, whether working in an agency, whether working for like Matty Rhodes, or even with AdHoc, that they have to contract out, they have to contract out for people like me, to be able to assist with addressing the violences in our community. What I'm asking for, along with the small business owners, as well as, as, as any of the nonprofits, that we continue to incentivize these funds, and that you lift up small businesses so that we can be able to provide an aid with our community. I'm a mental health professional, I'm also a recovery counselor. The, the fentanyl epidemic is real. Nobody talks about it. She's right. She's right. And it's affecting, it's affecting people who look like me as well. It's not just, it's not just a Blue Springs issue. It's not just a Grandview issue. It's not, it's not Kansas City. It's just, it's definitely an independence issue. It's definitely all of our issue as far as the county. What we're asking for is, what I'm asking for is the availability to be able to help. Because there, I'm one of many who want to go into our communities and want to aid and assist, but they have to also make sure that their kids get to school. They also have to make sure that they keep their businesses running. I would love to hire two more therapists to be able to help here in Lee Summit, but I'm limited in my capacity. So what I'm asking for is that you provide the funding that, so that small businesses can thrive and that with these systems that we actually live in can essentially change. Because what I'm realizing is, oh, is my time in? Oh, okay.
Be conditioned, Tom.
No, I'm just checking. What I want to ensure is that although everyone's here to address their particular, their particular opinion or issue and their topic, the truth of the matter is that we're all talking about the wellbeing of the people of Jackson County. I only want to ensure that the funding that's actually being utilized does that instead of renovating offices.
As a reminder, because I won't open the mic for anyone to just pop up, if you would like to speak, please see Angie or Rebecca in the back, sign up very quickly and you will have that opportunity. Otherwise, I will close and let us not catch the snow in our office. So we have one more, Mr. Cameron Chambers.
Yeah, my name is Cameron Chambers. I am a trail building volunteer with Urban Trail Co. and Heartland Outside. I know I've spoke to most of all of you before about, you know, issues surrounding public open spaces and parks and trails. I, first of all, wanted to say we're really encouraged and heartened by the Blue River Master Plan that has recently been adopted. I think there's some really good things in there. You know, I think, yeah, just overall, we're very encouraged about the direction that that kind of community project was able to get. So the reason to stand up and speak now is that I hope that we can really take it seriously from a funding perspective because the issues along Blue River, you know, I don't need to go into, everybody knows the countless issues and, you know, it's pick one, there's so many going on and we need to turn the tide there, you know? It's the middle of our city. It's really a Kansas City river. I mean, it starts in Johnson County and comes through Kansas. It's 40 miles long right here in our community and it's something that, you know, most people buzz over without even a second thought of what's going on below. Over the course of the last 20-plus years, volunteers have carved out a truly amazing trail network and I encourage everybody, if you haven't been there, to hike or ride or horseback ride on the trails, to make time to do it and reconnect with how beautiful and absolutely stunning that part of town is. And, you know, I think the Blue River Master Plan has really a lot of opportunity to re, to, to open this area back up to the community and that it's kind of forgot about it or just hasn't engaged in it. So many times I hear stories from, man, when I was a kid, we used to, we used to hike out here, we used to play in the river out here, we used to ride motorcycles out here, you know? All of those things are like good memories that live in our community and they're kind of lying dormant for so many. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity with this ARPA funds because it is something that came from kind of a different type of source and this is kind of a different type of project that we need to, to get out in front of several issues. I think this is a really good opportunity to, to take a look at what percentage of that can be, you know, given, and given to Jackson County parks in order to be able to execute on the master plan. We've been through these planning processes many times and I know you all have and everybody in here has, right? Like sometimes it feels like we're in an endless planning process and we never then go do the things, right? And I feel like this is a good opportunity, this is a good time to, let's go do the things, right? Like I think one thing that just keeps burning for me is with the opportunities of the World Cup coming to town, like at the timing of that and how far yet we are out, but yet how close we are, like I think this is a great opportunity to really put a foot forward and have something ready to show the world that is really special and unique to Kansas City. And that river is, it really is a special, special place. The history of there, the three trails crossings, you know? I mean, this is where, this is where people came across the country and decided they're right outside of the Grandview Triangle, whether they were going to go to New Mexico and the Santa Fe Trail or to California or on the Oregon Trail, right? Like people were making the decisions that then changed the face of our country right there. And it's, it's such a significant part of our history that I don't feel like we're addressing or giving the, or giving the due, the due justice to. And, you know, I mean, there is Civil War markings and we do talk about that some, but I don't think we, we talk near enough about the fact that, you know, the Civil War was fought with that border being kind of, that river being kind of the de facto border between Missouri and Kansas. I mean, you know, the North and South were camped out on, on either side of that river. And that's such a, that's, that's a history that we, we shouldn't forget in our community and it's a history that we can connect with, with the trails and with the open space planning that I think can bring people back and, and give a voice to those stories and things that we can reconnect with and hopefully heal many of the past injustices and begin to move on. The last thing I'll say on that is it is absolutely as proven as it could be that economic development follows trails. It just happens. I mean, you can point to countless examples. If you want one right here in our own community, go ask Crane Brewing how the Rock Island line has affected their business. You know, it's transformed them and it does this everywhere, you know? You can go down to Bentonville, Arkansas and see a city that's been completely transformed from trails. That trail network is literally sitting there, 70-plus miles of interconnected trail from Highway 150 all the way into Slope Park. It goes the entire distance. All we need to do is put the infrastructure in there so that people can access it, so that they can park, so that they can have restrooms, so that they can feel safe, so that they can know where to go, so that there's signs, so that it's an equitable experience for all. So thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Mr. Billy Z.
Hello, I'm Billy Z. Real quick, I want to touch, before I forget, I'm going to kind of go forward and then come back to this, but how important is it that the World Cup's coming here in three years, you know? And with that being said, how important is that to local artists, you know? This is our chance. I don't want you to forget that, you know? That's huge. It's everything for an artist. So now skipping back, you know, I, I'm speaking from the perspective of a veteran, PTSD struggler, family member of someone who died four times last year from fentanyl, victim of homelessness, myself, three times as a volatile veteran, you know, life of a veteran, right? Small business owner, artist and musician. So go figure, the odds are against me. But, so I mean, with that being said, I don't need to say much more. I mean, it's imperative that there are funds and support and the thing, you know, the place that I found myself creating businesses was in the gaps, you know, in all those gaps. Every time I fell, you know, fell, you know, from the stable whatever of society and become homeless or struggled, you know, I created a business. I created a farm in Colorado where we provided services for veterans. We provided services for kids. We had a mobile petting zoo. It was beautiful, but I didn't own the land. I couldn't afford to. I got kicked off. I was homeless. I hung on, I hung on to the farm to make sure that the animals all made it. I had 22 animals. Did that and then I was homeless because I couldn't take them anymore. I was beaten down. I moved back to Kansas City, became an artist, you know, I needed a creative outlet. I was struggling and people told me, you can't do that. I said, why not? You know, I did it and, but as we all know, artists start. So we just, you know, for, you gain any bit of momentum, you don't want to lose it. I don't want to lose it. I wanted the opportunity to put my art in the airport, to put my art somewhere where it can be seen. I think it's pretty good. I don't know, might not be. Thank you. But, you know, with that being said, let's support our artists, you know? When we have the opportunity to put art around the city or statues, anything, let's not outsource that. Let's, let's hire a local artist, a veteran. You know, there are probably more world-class artists that are homeless. I bet you, I would, I would bet that the majority of creative geniuses are on the streets and we don't even know it and they don't even know it. Well, they haven't given themselves a chance. The society kicks them in the whatever, you know? Let's just support each other and love each other and with that being said, it just means help each other, you know? And anyway, I support all of you. That's all I got. So thank you.
Billy, I just wanted to make note, there is a Jackson County Arts Commission that is, does have an allocation of $200,000 as of right now. So that is something that is in the budget already.
Sure.
This is questionable whether it's enough or not, but.
What, yeah, and my business is more than just art. So that, so that's, but, but yes, thank you very much.
We have our last speaker for the evening, Mr. Stan Woodwards.
Thank you. I'm Stan Woodward and I live in Independence, Missouri. Moved here from Utah in 1981 and I love it here. I love the people here. I've served as a pastor in the inner city for a number of years and I love it. I love the people, I love the, I love the culture here of politeness. When I try to get on the road, people let me merge. We love it here. But I did come to speak out against, against this idea of sending or allocating a million dollars to promote abortion. As I've worked with people as a pastor, abortion's not the answer. Adoption and other options are the way we need to look. We shouldn't be supporting this. A lot of my work as I was a pastor was trying to strengthen families, help men learn to be man, to take care of their wives and their children, teaching the children how to grow up the boys to be a man, to work and take care of their family as my father did, as my father-in-law did for his family. And so we just, we'd like to look for ways to strengthen families. A very quick story, my father-in-law came home from World War II. He'd been in France, suffered a lot, came home with PTSD and what did he do? He got in some odd job, saved some money, worked as in the scouting organization, not as a volunteer and met my mother-in-law. He didn't want her to be homeless and so he spent five years, as he courted her, saving every penny so he could pay cash for a little house and they could move in and if he died, she and the children would have a place to live. He's one of my heroes. He didn't make excuses. He worked hard. He wasn't perfect, but he was an amazing, wonderful husband and father. And I'm so thankful for him and the service he gave to the world by raising my wife and caring for his family. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
And that concludes the testimony for today. I just want to draw your all's attention again to the total amount of legislative representation you have here. Six of the nine total. As we branch out, I think we have another additional two legislators represented here in the room. So you have nearly a complete representation of your legislative body here to learn about the needs from you all directly. And so as budget chair, I'll continue to advocate for this level of transparency and inclusion. I, we have another testimony opportunity this coming Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Red Bridge, Mid-Cotton Public Library, Red Bridge and Homes basically. So please participate in that process. We will have a budget submitted to the administration this week. It's kind of hard when we have such little time to budget, but nevertheless, we have done our best and I think due diligence that we possibly could in this process to present a document that is inclusive of many different ideas and suggestions across the stable and we'll continue to do so. So we'll start budgeting as soon as this is done so that we have a lot more time than 30 days we were here when we started. So thank you all for coming this evening. Please be safe. I'm not sure what the weather's like outside, but, you know, we can't lose any taxpayers leaving here.